Okay, we're about to start. After our pledge of allegiance, we'll have a moment of silence for Middletown High School senior young man who tragically passed away recently. Lonnie Han, who is a retired town of Walk Hill DPW employee with twenty six years of service. And Darrell Vasquez, which was the New York State Park employee who passed away battling the Jennings Creek wildfire. Thanks, everyone for coming out tonight. A couple of public hearings. We'll start with the first one. Madam Clerk, can you read the announcements?
Notice is hereby given that there has been introduced before the Town Board of the Town of Walk Hill, New York, a local law entitled A Local Law Amending Local Law Five of Twenty Two, as amended by Local Law Two and Eight of Twenty Three and Local Law Number Three of Twenty Four, to extend the moratorium prohibiting the review and approval of applications for the development of warehouses and distribution facilities in the town of Walk Hill for an additional six months. Please take further notice that a public hearing will be held by the Town Board of the Town of Walk Hill on November twenty first at seven twenty five P M. At Walk Hill Town Hall ninety nine Tower Drive to consider the adoption of the aforesaid introductory local law. Any resident of the Town of Walk Hills entitled to be heard upon said introductory local law at such public hearing. Copies are available for review at Walk Hill Town Hall. The Town of Walk Hill will make every effort to assure the hearing is accessible to persons with disabilities. Anyone requiring special assistance and or reasonable accommodation should contact the Town Clerk. By order of the Town Board of the Town of Walk Hill, Louisa Gracia, Town Clerk.
Notice was posted and published in accordance with law.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Anyone want to come up, state your name in regards to this extension of the moratorium on warehouses in the town of Walk Hill? Anyone in the audience? Anyone on Zoom? Anyone in the audience?
Should probably just make a few comments for the record with respect to board's intent to move quickly and get rid of the moratorium.
So I'll ask the councilman, starting with Councilman Coyne. Do you have anything to add?
I'll just reiterate what Will had just said, that the intention is to put this to rest, put this to bed as quickly as possible. We've had this moratorium on for long enough, but there's a lot of work that needed to go into it into the master plan review, and I appreciate what that committee has done thus far. And hopefully in a couple of months, you know, I'm praying that we're able to vote on ending the moratorium.
Thank you, Councilman Valentin.
It's the same thing, you know, the premises that the moratorium or the end of the moratorium will hopefully coincide with the master plan committees recommendations and voting on those recommendations. And within those recommendations of the master plan includes the locations of allowable warehouses and preferably around the areas closest to seventeen eighty four and the quickway rather than the inner roads that that we have in our town. Everyone knows, everyone has felt it. You get behind one truck and it's a nuisance. So we're trying to to lessen that that blow. Unfortunately, this moratorium does not address or cannot address those warehouses that were already in flight. And those will unfortunately continue to be built. But anything outside that was not already in flight will be subject to the new zoning code that we'll have in place. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Vanilla.
It's already been said, so I'm not going to say much more to that. It's like being a dead horse, of course. This moratorium needs to be in effect for this amount of time that we're proposing, so we can get all the paperwork out and to the state that is needed to be done. And that's after the town council votes on it. So that's really all I have to say.
Thank you, Councilman Johnson.
Thank you. As you guys know, Mr. Vanilla and myself are on the master plan review committee. And the committee presented back in April in a public hearing in this room, some recommendations to address the influx of warehouses that we had. I believe at the time there was twenty three projects pending occurring or in the works, which, you know, started the moratorium. I think it's long enough. As soon as we can act on and address those and approve those recommendations, it should limit where the warehouses would go to locations that are very close to interchanges. So I don't see this taking six months. You know, in my mind, I would think that we, you know, even go into county planning if we do something shortly with the recommendations. We'd be able to wrap this up and vote on it in January. So we're looking at maybe three months. So that's it.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience? What everybody said up here is exactly what's the purpose of this moratorium. I think it was a smart thing that the board did two years ago, and to extend it would be even smarter as we look at to whatever ever recommendations made to the board by the master plan, who has done a great job, and we'll take a look at it and hopefully we'll vote and we'll address whatever needs to be addressed. With that, I make a motion to close the public hearing. All in favor? Thank you. Madam Clerk, next public hearing notice.
Notice is hereby given that there has been introduced for the Town Board of the Town of Walk Hill, New York, a local law entitled A Local Law Amending Local Law Three of Twenty Twenty Three, as amended by Local Law Four of Twenty Twenty Four, to extend the moratorium prohibiting the review and issuance of any permit approval or variance for certain land use activities within the town's Shawangunk Hill corridor preservation overlay district for an additional six months. Please take further notice that the public, that a public hearing will be held by the Town Board of the Town of Walk Hill on November twenty first at seven twenty five P M. At Walk Hill Town Hall ninety nine Tower Drive to consider the adoption of the aforesaid introductory introductory local law. Any resident of the Town of Walk Hill is entitled to be heard upon said introductory local law at such public hearing. Copies are available for review at Walk Hill Town Hall. The Town of Walk Hill will make every effort to assure the hearing is accessible to persons with disabilities. Anyone requiring special assistance and or reasonable accommodation should contact the Town Clerk. By order of the Town Board of the Town of Walk Hill, Louisa Gracia, Town Clerk.
Notice was posted and published in accordance with law. The need to extend this moratorium, as I'm sure the councilman and the supervisor will discuss, particularly Councilman Johnson, is because of the ongoing water study. That's a twelve month study and we haven't had that completed yet. We're in the midst of it. Therefore, it's the Town Board's intention to extend the moratorium while that study continues. Thank you.
Thank you, Will. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Anyone in the audience? Anyone on Zoom? Hey, I'll ask the councilman if they have anything to say. I'll start with Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Supervisor. As you heard our attorney mention, this is a twelve month study because we want to get information from each season. Obviously, the water flow in the kill is different in the spring than it is, you know, like this fall when we haven't had rain forever. So that changes all the dynamics, and we needed that information for a baseline to create some data and figure out if the overlay that we originally passed is sufficient to do what it needs to do to preserve the water quality in the kill. So that's what this is for, and we are in the process. So we need to extend this that far. Unlike the previous one, we've had no information from applicants or requests, look for hardships to move forward with it. So I don't think really anyone has any concerns at this point. So I think it's, you know, something we have to do.
Thank you. Any of the other councilmen want to speak?
No, I I think that, you know, we're looking at this and and taking a proactive approach and making sure we leave no stone unturned and in ensuring that we've we've evaluated on on all scenarios on the on the time of year that changes that that whole area. And so I think that we are truly doing our due diligence to protect that area.
Councilman Coyne?
Nothing to add. I think it's all been said.
Pretty much, um, it's been said and definitely to protect the kill over development and to look what's going on up there, especially recently where we had an incident where there was some, I believe, some sewage that was spilled into the kill about six, eight months ago. So I believe I know we're doing the right thing, keeping that area doing the study. Anyone else in the audience? Anyone on Zoom? Motion to close the public hearing? All in favor? Aye, thank you. Madam Clerk?
Please take notice that a public hearing will be held by the Town Board of the Town of Walk Hill on November twenty first, twenty twenty four at seven twenty five P M. At Walk Hill Town Hall ninety nine Tower Drive. Building A regarding the formation of the Hasbrook Estates lighting district pursuant to the order of the Walk Hill Board calling for a public hearing dated October thirtieth, twenty twenty four, founded and described in accordance with the map plan and report dated November twenty three, prepared by engineering and survey surveying properties, which concerns the lots designated on the tax map of the Town of Walk Hill on a section twenty four, block one, lot eighty three, known as eight fifty nine to nine oh one Silver Lake Scotstown Road. The petition map plan and engineering report seeking formation of the aforesaid district are now in file in the office of the Town Clerk of the town, and the maximum amount proposed to be expended in the construction of the lighting district lighting facilities is zero dollars since the expense of the necessary improvements shall be borne by the petitioner. The cost of the typical typical property owner to maintain the improvements will be approximately ninety seven dollars and seventy three cents per lot per year. Any resident of the Town of Walk Hills entitled to be heard upon said proposed lighting district formation at such public hearing. Copies of the order are available for review at Walk Hill Town Hall ninety nine Tower Drive. The Town of Walk Hill will make every effort to assure the hearing is accessible to persons with disabilities. Anyone requiring special assistance and or reasonable accommodation should contact the Town Clerk. By order of the Town Board of the Town of Walk Hill, Louisa Gracia, Town Clerk.
Thank you.
Notice was published and posted in accordance with law. This public hearing and the next two to extend the water district and to establish drainage district are in conjunction with an approved site plan for the Hasbrook Estate subdivision, the requirements being that a lighting drainage district be established and that the water district be extended. The Town Board is familiar with the project based on some meetings that were had. So it's necessary to have these public hearings before the districts, of course, are formally approved by the Town Board. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone in the audience, come up, state your name. And in case you are wondering where this is at, this is going to be located on Scotstown Silver Lake Road. That open area that as you drive from was it industrial to make a right onto Scotstown Silver Lake Roads on the left, that big open area that's been open for a long time. This is where they're going to build. And if you, the same builder who built the other houses further down Bummel, if you look at what they built, I'm looking forward to seeing some nice homes being built there in the town. Anyone on Zoom? Anyone in the audience? Any councilman want to speak on this?
So this is actually if you're coming off Georges Row onto Silver Lake, you make a right and there's big field to your left and that that's where it's being built. If you know the Presbyterian Church that's up by the light, it's that field that has been cornfields for the longest time and probably Styles remember when John Keen used to hay that field. Yes, yes. So just for the audience that's listening, it's across the street from Mr. Mills's old house. One of the things to, for everyone's knowledge, when we create lighting districts, so the petitioner comes and and wants to, at the request of those immediate residents or the new residents coming in, they want to put up lights. Not everybody wants lights. And so we look at the lights to ensure that it's not creating lighting pollution. But the other thing is that those residents requesting that have to pay for those lights. So it's not, you know, it's not put on the burden of the rest of the taxpayers to pay for that lighting district. This district will be maintained and and paid for by those immediate residents. The other thing, just for informational, I commend the builder developer. We sat with him originally. There were, there were much smaller lots and he heard our concerns with that and and raised the lots on the average there. They're three quarters of an acre lot, if not more in on that area. So it's going to be a nice project.
Anyone else? Any councilman?
I think Councilman Valentin pretty much said that the most important thing is that it's, does not cost taxpayers anything. The lighting district will be billed to the residents there. And, you know, I know we're not on it, but same with the drainage district and extending the water line, the next two public hearings. All of that cost falls on either A, the developer, or B, the the future residents that move in there. It's it's boilerplate for for any development, any new development coming into the town that these things happen. But I will reiterate what Councilman Valentin has also stated that the developer, he is a well-known developer in town, does a great fantastic job anywhere he builds, but he did listen to the concerns of the board and make bigger lots and 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 make adjustments so that they weren't right on top of one another. So that's all I got.
Thank you. Anyone else? With that, I make a motion. Can you step up, ma'am? It's a public hearing, ma'am. Step right up, state your name, please.
Is that a mic on?
I don't know. Yes. I'm Styles, May Jack, and I'm just curious. When you, are they going to have sidewalks? Because that's up in an area where there are sidewalks anyway. Is there a way that we can get those continued?
There's no sidewalks over there.
Yes, there are.
Where?
All the way up Scotstown Silver Lake Road.
They stop right there in industrial, on Georges.
They they on Georges, but
This is further up.
But but you're continuing a sort of a suburban.
Well, the way the way the setup is, is that there's going to be a road going off of Silver Lake Scotstown Road. So it's going inward. I don't know if there's really
So what they're, what you're saying is that there's going to be a turnoff parallel to whatever road is up there now.
Georges, Georges.
Yeah, no, no.
It won't be right across.
Across the street, so it won't. It'll be on the other side of Georges.
Longview, I believe you're talking about.
Highview.
Highview.
No, no, no. No, what I'm
There's Georges goes
Well, there's Goshen Turnpike. Okay, there's Goshen Turnpike, and then actually then it goes around the corner.
That's that Blumel.
And yeah, that's the one I was talking about.
Yeah.
So if it will, like if if Blumel continued, it would be parallel to that road. You're saying they're turning it in.
You have to make a right onto Silver Lake Road, and then the project is on the right.
Right.
So as far as sidewalks styles, I'm not sure, but the current project that's on Blumel Road leads into a cul-de-sac, and that cul-de-sac does have sidewalks. This project will have a cul-de-sac. I would have to look at the plans to tell you where they're going.
I just know that used to be, we used to ask for that.
Yeah, I believe, and and someone shaking their head, yes, that they will have sidewalks.
Inside.
The cul-de-sac.
Inside the cul-de-sac. I don't know about Scotstown Silver Lake Road.
I I can, I I can look at the plans and let you.
I just know it. It took us a long time to get sidewalks up Scotstown Silver Lake Road. And if I know that it is the expense of the developer. And so if we haven't talked about it, I think we should. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And and that goes all, that's all in the planning process in the planning board. I will say one thing as far as sidewalks, and we have them in different areas in the town. When you put sidewalks in a development and and something like this, the residents are not aware, and they become aware that come a snowstorm, they're responsible for that piece of the sidewalk in front of their house to clean it, to shovel it. And the town spends a lot of time chasing those those residents and reminding them that they are responsible for that. And you get, you you get some pushback saying, I didn't sign up for that. I I, you know, take the sidewalk off. So it's 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 a double edged sword there.
But this is about the lighting industry.
Yeah, this is about the lighting industry. So this is about the light.
No, I just, when we're talking about lighting and the rest of it, I just wanted that to be, I mean, if as as citizens, we really should take responsibility for our property and make it not hazardous. And for years, I watched children and and mostly lower income children, because that's who lived in patio road or whatever, walking in the middle of the street, because that's the only place there really was to walk. And I don't want to see it to happen. That's all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Just to add, I believe that sidewalks in the cul-de-sac will probably be in there along Scotstown Silver Lake Road. I do not believe that is a requirement, and I'm not sure if the planning board is going to make them do it. There are a lot of homes there. And those homes, you got to take into consideration, maybe those people don't want sidewalks. Okay, I'm just, you, you, okay. Okay, but it's their homes. Okay, all right. Thank you. Anybody else? Um, anybody else? Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Madam Clerk.
Please take notice that a public hearing will be held by the town board of the town of Walk Hill on November twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-four at seven twenty-five P M at Walk Hill Town Hall. Ninety-nine Tower Drive, Building A, regarding the formation of the Hasbrook Estates Drainage District. Pursuant to the order of the Walk Hill Town Board calling for a public hearing dated October thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four, bounded and described in accordance. With the map plan and report dated November twenty-two thousand and twenty-three. Prepared by engineering and surveying properties which concerns the lots designated on the tax map of the town of Walk Hill. Known as section twenty-four, block one, lot eighty-three, known as eight fifty-nine dash nine oh one Silver Lake Scottstown Road. The petition, map, plan, and engineering reports seeking the formation of the aforesaid district are now in file in the office of the town clerk. And the maximum amount proposed to be expended in the construction of the drainage facilities is zero dollars. Since the expense of the necessary improvements shall be borne by the petitioner. The cost to the typical property owner to maintain the improvements will be approximately six hundred and twenty-eight dollars and thirty-eight cents per lot per year. Any resident of the town of Walk Hills entitled to be heard upon said proposal drainage district formation. At such public hearing, copies of the order calling for the public hearing and other documentation related thereto are available for review at Walk Hill Town Hall. Ninety-nine Tower Drive, Building A. The town of Walk Hill make every effort to assure the hearing is accessible to persons with disabilities. Anyone requiring special assistance and or reasonable accommodations should contact the town clerk. By order of the town board of the town of Walk Hill, Louisa and Gracia Town Clerk.
Okay, notice was posted and published in accordance with law. As you may have heard, the. Uh, part of the public hearing notice and within the petition and map plan and report. The cost to the typical property owner to maintain the improvements will be approximately six hundred and twenty-eight dollars and thirty-eight cents. Per lot per year, obviously, the lighting district is a lot less of a charge per home. Believe it was ninety-seven dollars change per year. Drainage facilities are more expensive to install. They're more expensive to maintain and funds need to be on hand by the town in the collection every year. For the drainage district, when something goes bad, it's a lot more expensive to fix. That being the case, this is still not a general charge to the town. It's only a charge to those persons who acquire homes within the subdivision. So more money, but again, not a town charge. Same um same situation as the prior public hearing, it's the same subdivision. And the developers worked with the town to make the uh. Make the lots more acceptable to the town board. And uh, that's where we are on this one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frank. Anyone in the audience? Anyone on Zoom? And in the board members? Motion to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
Please take notice that a public hearing will be held by the town board of the town of Walk Hill on November twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-four at seven twenty-five P M at Walk Hill Town Hall. Regarding the petition of Hasbrook Development LLC and Scottstown Presbyterian Church. To extend the water distribution system within the Walk Hill Consolidated Water District in the town of Walk Hill to include the lots on the tax map. Designated as section twenty-four dash one, lot eighty-three, known as eight fifty-nine to nine oh one Silver Lake Scottstown Road. And section forty-five, block one, lot one, known as three sixty-five to three sixty-seven Blummel Road. Pursuant to the order of the Walk Hill Town Board calling for a public hearing dated October thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four, bounded and described in accordance with the engineer's report. Prepared by engineering and surveying property dated as of my May, two thousand and twenty-four. The petition and engineering report are now in file in the office of the town clerk. The maximum amount proposed to be expended for the improvements by the town, as stated in said petition, is zero dollars. It being the intention that the entire cost of the improvements is to be paid by the developer or its successor. Within the territory for which the extension of the district is proposed. The cost to the typical property owner to maintain the improvements will be approximately seventeen dollars and fifty cents per lot per year. Any resident of the town of Walk Hills entitled to be heard upon said proposed extension and drainage district at such public hearing. Copies of the order calling for the public hearing and other documentation related thereto are available for review at Walk Hill Town Hall. Ninety-nine Tower Drive. The town of Walk Hill make every effort to assure the hearing is accessible to persons with disabilities. Anyone requiring special assistance and or reasonable accommodations should contact the town clerk. By order of the town board of the town of Walk Hill, Louisa and Gracia Town Clerk.
Okay, notice was posted and published in accordance with law. The difference here is this in it, this is an extension of the existing consolidated water district of the town. A district does not have to be established separately for this, it's just an extension. And uh, this petition for extension of the water district was really the driving force. Of the developer coming back to the town board uh when concerns were expressed. And working with the town board to meet those before the town would even consider. Entertaining the water district extension petition. So um again, there'll be the charge per lot. Uh, that's sold, that's just like anyone who's in a water district, in the water district in the town, uh, part of their. Their fees and charges and taxes are paying for maintenance of the consolidated water district. So that's what brought us to this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Mr. Frank. Anyone in the audience? Anyone on Zoom? Councilman? Anyone?
Just remind you that anytime there's a new development. The water main going down. Uh, this cul-de-sac will be, the cost will be uh on the developer. The services going to the homes again on the developer, so no, no cost to the taxpayers. As far as uh, this is concerned, so.
Thank you. Anyone else? Motion to close public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we have public participation, three minutes. Agenda items only. Anyone on Zoom? Okay, next we go to correspondents. Madam Clerk, we have one.
Uh, we have a note of thanks um on behalf of our pastors and Transformation Church. We'd like to once again thank you. For being part of our trunk or treat event. It was a success because of you, and that is a thank you from pastors Joe and Ruth Neves.
Um, that's a that's, it was a great event that night. It was, the weather was great, was packed. And so everyone's familiar that Transformation Church is turning eighty this year. And they're having uh event on Sunday at the Paramount Theater at eleven o'clock. So um, it's great to see um our neighbors and our partners who are good neighbors and partners in the community. Be around that long. Okay. Next, resolutions.
I'm earning my money tonight.
Whatever.
Resolution of the Walk Hill Town Board adopting local law number nine of two thousand and twenty-four, extending local law number five of two thousand and twenty-two as amended by local laws two. And eight of twenty-three and local law three of two thousand and twenty-four, which established a six-month moratorium prohibiting the review. And approval of applications for the development of warehouses and distribution facilities in the town of Walk Hill. For an additional six months. Resolve that the town clerk be in is and is hereby directed to enter. The local law in the minutes of this meeting and the local law book of the town of Walk Hill and give due notice to the adoption of the local law to the Secretary of State of New York. Have a motion.
So move.
Second.
Mister Coin?
Yes.
Mister Valentin?
Yes.
Mister Vanilla?
Yes.
Mister Johnson?
Yes, ma'am.
Supervisor Serrano?
Yes.
Resolution of the town of the Walk Hill Town Board adopting local law number ten of two thousand and twenty-four, extending local law three of twenty-three as amended by local law. Four of twenty-four, which established a twelve-month moratorium prohibiting the review and issuance of any permit, approval. Or variance for certain land use activities within the town's Shawangunk Hill. Corridor Preservation Overlay District for an additional six months. Resolve the town clerk be and is hereby directed to enter said local law in the minutes of this meeting and the local law book of the town of Walk Hill. And to give due notice of the adoption of said local law to the Secretary of the State of New York. Have a motion.
So move.
Second.
Mister Coin?
Yes.
Mister Valentin?
Yes, ma'am.
Mister Vanilla?
Yes, ma'am.
Mister Johnson?
Yes, ma'am.
Supervisor Serrano?
Yes, ma'am.
Resolution of the town where the town of Walk Hill establishing a lighting district. In the proposed Hasbrook Estates subdivision at Silver Lake Scottstown Road. My reading my small things, sir.
Nope.
Ten?
This um. The board approves the establishment of the Hasbrook Estates subdivision lighting district. In accordance with the resolution before the board at this time. And that the town clerk will take all necessary actions in conjunction with the establishment of the district.
What he said. Can I have a motion?
The move.
Second.
Who's second with that, Mister Vanilla?
Mister Vanilla.
Thank you.
Mister Coin?
Yes.
Mister Valentin?
Yes.
Mister Vanilla?
Yes, ma'am.
Mister Johnson?
Yes, ma'am.
Supervisor Serrano?
Yes.
Resolution of the town where the town of Walk Hill establishing a drainage district in the proposed Hasbrook Estates subdivision at Silver Lake Scottstown Road. You go.
The town board hereby approves the establishment of a drainage district for the. Hasbrook Estates subdivision and in accordance with the resolution before the board. And that the town clerk take all necessary action uh in accordance with the resolution to effectuate the establishment of the district.
Can I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Mister Coin?
Yes.
Mister Valentin?
Yes.
Mister Vanilla?
Yes, ma'am.
Mister Johnson? Supervisor Serrano?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I gotta. Get there, my double-sided ladies. Resolution of the town where the town of Walk Hill authorizing the town supervisor to sign an intermunicipal agreement. For the twenty-four, twenty-five Orange County Stop D W I program. Resolve the town board of the town of Walk Hills hereby hereby authorizes the town supervisor or is designated to sign. An intermunicipal agreement on behalf of the town associated with the twenty-four, twenty-five. Orange County Stop D W I program, subject to final review by the town attorney. May I have a motion?
So.
Who's the second?
What, second?
Mister Vanilla? Mister Coin?
Yes.
Mister Valentin?
Yes.
Mister Vanilla?
Yes.
Mister Johnson?
Yes, ma'am.
Supervisor Serrano?
Yes. Yeah, we skipped one.
That one.
It's a region. Resolution of the town board of the town of Walk Hill. Extending the consolidated water district of the town of Walk Hill to the Hasbrook Estates subdivision. Uh, it's resolved that the town board hereby extends the consolidated water district. To the Hasbrook subdivision, a Hasbrook Estates subdivision, as well as the Scottstown Presbyterian Church property. In accordance with the resolution and order extending the district, that's before the town board. And for the clerk to effectuate. Uh, the intent of the resolution by processing any and all documents uh thereto. Motion?
So move.
Second.
Second.
Mister Coin, we need a roll call vote on this. Mister Coin?
Yes.
Mister Valentin?
Yes.
Mister Vanilla?
Yes, sir.
Mister Johnson?
Yes, sir.
Supervisor?
Yes.
Thank you. Back to you.
We voted on the D W I.
What?
We voted on the D W I.
We did the D W I. That was Mister Serrano and Mister Vanilla.
Resolution of the town board of the town of Walk Hill promoting a person to the position of working leader. In the Parks Department, in the Parks Department at the Department of Public Works. Resolve the town where the town of Walk Hill hereby appoints Michael Nye to the position of working leader Parks in the town of Walk Hill Parks Department. Effective immediately at a salary of forty-one dollars and sixty-seven cents per hour. And subject to the submission and acceptance of all appropriate documentation by the Orange County Department of Human Resources. May I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Mister Coin?
Yes.
Mister Valentin?
Mister Luck, Mike, I was here when you first came. I'm still here, and you are too.
So the yes?
That's a yes.
Mister Vanilla?
Yes, ma'am.
Mister Johnson?
Yes, ma'am, and for the record, Eric's been here since everybody's been here.
Supervisor Serrano?
Yes. Congratulations, Mike. Very well deserved. Good job.
Resolution of the town board of the town of Walk Hill appointing Kevin Mulqueen to the town of Walk Hill zoning board of appeals. Resolve that the town board of the town of Walk Hill hereby appoints Kevin Mulqueen to the town of Walk Hill zoning board of appeals. To fill the current vacancy effective immediately, which appointment shall expire February, I'm sorry, January twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-six. May I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Mister Coin?
Yes.
Mister Valentin?
Yes.
Mister Vanilla?
Yes, ma'am.
Mister Johnson?
Yes, ma'am.
Supervisor Serrano?
Yes.
Congratulations, Kevin.
Kevin, congrats.
Congrats, Kevin.
If I may, Mister Supervisor?
Yes.
Uh, as long as Councilman Valentin's been here, I've been here a little less. But I've had the opportunity and the pleasure to work with Mister Mulqueen as a town councilman. And as a current member of the town's Industrial Development Agency. And and I'm certain that he will bring his skills and his knowledge and compassion to. The zoning board of appeals, and I think the town made a very nice choice. Thank you.
Thank you.
And he's a Met fan, so can't hate the guy for that.
That's the only thing that's a problem.
Resolution.
The chief is happy.
Yeah.
Resolution of the town where the town of Walk Hill authorizing the creation of an asset forfeiture escrow fund. Resolve that the town comptroller is hereby directed to deposit and secure monies. Of this escrow fund and a segregated bank account in a manner provided by general municipal law. The town board may utilize the deposited escrow funds for law enforcement enhancement efforts. In the manner provided by C P L R, section one, three, four, nine, three. Any interest earned or capital gains realized on the money so deposited or invested shall accrue. And become part of the escrow fund. The town comptroller shall account for the escrow fund in a manner which maintains. The separate identity of the escrow fund and shows the date and amount of each sum paid into the fund. Interest earned by this fund, capital gains or losses resulting from the sale of investments of the fund. The amount and date of each withdrawal from the fund and the total assets of the fund showing cash balance and a schedule of investments shall. At the end of each fiscal year, render to the board a detailed report. Of the operation and condition of the reserve fund and further resolve that except as otherwise provided by law expenditures from this escrow fund shall be made only. For the purpose of which the escrow fund is established, no expenditure shall be made from this escrow fund without the approval of the town board and such. Additional actions or proceedings as may be required by section six V two. Of the general municipal law or any other law, and is further resolved that this resolution shall take effect immediately. May I have a motion?
So move.
Second discussion.
Yeah.
So the reason for this resolution, and the chief could elaborate if necessary. We received a series of checks, the town received a series of checks from the the district attorney's office. Uh, from some drug operations in conjunction with the countywide drug task force. And other criminal actions that were being pursued against uh, which happened within the town of Walk Hill. So uh, in the aggregate, I believe, chief, we received about six, seven thousand dollars worth of checks. Um, and those checks cannot be deposited into the general fund because they're um, they're. Monies that were sent to the town in conjunction with these criminal proceedings. You have to have a separate escrow fund under state law, so and they have to be deposited into a new and separate bank account. Although the town has been making rather Herculean efforts to cut down our number of bank accounts, this particular money. Has to go into a separate bank account because it can't be touched for anything except enhancement of law enforcement. So that's why this fund has to be created. Any further checks we get in asset forfeiture. Will have to go into this particular bank account. And then as the chief and the department come to the town board with any initiatives they want to spend the money on. The town board will make the decision on whether or not to go. The town board will make the decision on whether or not to go ahead and spend the money as requested by the police department. So that's really why this needs to be done. Chief, did I cover it?
So you and the board, you and the board did a wonderful job covering it all. As the town clerk, it clearly as the investigation has become more complex with our partnership in Orange County, Orange County Drug Task Force. Forfeiture is a great way to. Target, um, punish uh, offenders who involved in drug trade. So oftentimes with district attorney's office will do in more complex investigations. In addition to seeking sentencing, they will seize funds from the people who are convicted of crimes. And go through the court process, take the funds and distribute them to the police departments that were involved. As our investigation become more complex. We're going to see more funds coming our way in the future, right?
Alright, so just to be clear, there's, there's no way the town of Walk Hill is going to be doing any asset forfeiture when we pull people over.
So ironically enough, unrelated to this, about a month ago, that came up. In accreditation, we're reviewing our standards under the new system we've adopted and we elected not to do it because. It it's better to just focus on the narcotics cases and let the DA's office handle it. Because they're the ones that have to go through the court process anyway. So and those are the types of cases where it's most likely to be seized in a more complex drug investigations. In contrast to what we call summary arrests when we, excuse me, when a uniform officer makes an arrest in the field. Those cases are generally almost never subject to forfeiture proceedings. And if it. Leads to a bigger case, then I'll go to the task force anyway and they'll do the forfeiture proceeding. And so no, to answer your question.
And just to add, just to add, we're one of the few um, police agencies that we, we, we send and participate in the. In the countywide drugs, drug task force. So that gives us additional resources that we don't have to pay for. If we have issues in the town, if we know something is going on as far as drugs, um, we get a. A number of of agencies participating in that investigation because we are involved in in that task force.
Yeah, it's generally drugs.
Do you have an, I do have another question for this. Um, do we have a, ever pull anybody over for a DUI?
We don't, we don't do, the DA's office generally doesn't do forfeiture proceedings for DWI.
For for taking cars away from people from driving?
GA's office generally doesn't prosecute for forfeiture. They prosecute criminally, but they don't institute forfeiture proceedings.
Alright.
It's really the cash that's seized during the raids that these forfeiture proceedings are subject to.
Mister Coin?
Yes.
Mister Valentin?
Yes, ma'am.
Mister Vanilla?
Yes, ma'am.
Mister Johnson?
Yes, ma'am.
Supervisor Serrano?
Yes. Okay. Next, we have councilman comments. But I think I'm gonna do something different today. Think I'm gonna go first. Now, you know what? Councilman Coin, go ahead. See the look on your face.
Oh, it's okay. Start off with highway. Um, all paving projects for twenty twenty-four have been completed. Last roads were completed recently, uh, Lock Lamont Senior Way and Pocatello Road. Uh, we planted a few trees in the retention area behind Wayne Court and Lock Lamont. The trees at Wayne Court were replacement for dead trees. And the ones at Lock Lamont replaced some of the ones that we had. Had to take down because of a culvert replacement. Uh, leaf cleanup has begun and we're just about complete with a, a full round. Um, whether permitting, they'll be, they'll go back out and see if we can do a second round. Um. All trucks are now set for the snow plowing with the uh, plows on and the drivers have taken their, their test drives. They drive their route before the snow comes to identify anything that's new from the following year. Um. Be it curbs or 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 uh, uh, new mailboxes that stick out too far, anything that could cause an issue. So they, they do a, a test drive through their, their whole route. Um, so if we do get anything tonight, we are prepared. Um. Veterans Affairs, just want to remind everybody that post eleven eighty-one meets at the community center. On the second Tuesday of the month at seven thirty. And one other thing I wanted to share, and bear with me, I ha- I've got to read this off my phone. So there were some questions about the roadside parking. Uh, in town, so I'm going to read the laws so that, you know, gets out there. Parking of vehicles is prohibited by law on all highways and any other public property. Of the town between the hours of twelve AM and six AM. Beginning the first day of October in each year and continuing through the first day of April. In the succeeding year. And during times, during all times in which more than two inches of snow. Accumulates within any such twenty-four hour period. The purpose for this restriction is to allow our snow and ice control personnel to do their jobs safely. And effectively without the hazard and obstruction of roadside vehicles. Violation of this law could result in a parking ticket or possibly even damage to your vehicle. Please comply with the winter time no parking ordinance. So basically that's, uh. Also, it's interpreted that it's, so from those two dates, October first through April first. And also if two inches or more is to accumulate of snow. Uh, in twenty-four hour period, that's to cover for that, you know, freak snowstorm that could come in. You know, September or whenever, right? Um. So anytime, and and we've seen it where cars get plowed in. And it's not safe for the other residents trying to travel the road. It's not good for that poor guy or gal who's got their car now all blocked off in three feet of uh. Plowed snow up against their car, so um, just wanted to share that with the public. We are at that time of the year and uh, again, we might get something tonight. Uh, but but the, the law now is in effect this time of year. So, thank you.
Thank you, councilman. Councilman Valentin?
Thank you, supervisor. Um, I'll start with the assessors report. Um, first, thank you Lisa for this. The state has issued one thousand one hundred and thirty-four star credit checks to the town. Walk Hill residents in, in the Goshen Minnesick Valley Central and Pine Bush School Districts. To date, Middletown School District check report has not been issued by this, by the state to date. To register for the star credit check, contact New York State Department of Tax and Finance at five one eight four five seven two zero three six. The assessors department is preparing the twenty twenty-five renewal exemption for low income senior. Seniors, farm and disability with limited income, not-for-profit clergy, firefighters and ambulance. Exemptions to be mailed out mid, mid-December. If you feel you may be eligible, contact the assessors department. The assessors office has received over five hundred and fifty D transfers from the county. The assessor in conjunction with the planning and zoning has completed fifty-six variance mailings for. Projected upcoming projects in the town. The assessor is inspecting and preparing appraisals on upcoming residential small claims assessment review cases in Supreme Court. Various commercial properties are being inspected and negotiated with the assessor's attorney in court for value valuation purposes. Please be aware that the data collector is reviewing properties in and around the town that have any permits. Recent sales are under review. Those inspections are separate from the building department and informational door hanger will be left if no one is on the premises. Please call the office if you have any questions for assistance or any other questions in regards to any of this. You can call the town assessor, Lisa, and the assessment team can be reached at eight four five six nine two seven eight one zero. Onto police committee report. Currently, the department is at fifty-four full-time sworn police officers. We've just recently had an increase with additional police officer February eighteen swearing in of. That was, that was not February, that was um, November eighteen swearing in a full-time police officer, Luis Gonzalez. Uh, this officer was a New York City transfer and the advantage there is that. Um, the town does not have to pay for the academy um, training. We have an officer that comes on the job with, with experience and training and basically. We give him a few weeks of field training and he hits the ground running. Also, um, this is a home, homegrown. Officer, so he, he was raised and lives in, in the town. Arrest record to date are up twenty-six percent um, versus a, so it's ten seventy-five for twenty twenty-four. Versus eight forty-four, eight forty-eight for twenty twenty-three. Uh, parking, parking summons are up eighty, eighty-nine percent. So that would be three, thirty-three seventy-one for twenty twenty-four versus seventeen eighty-three for twenty twenty-three. The police community council, the town of Walker Police Community Council meeting will be held on Thursday, December fifth. And will be held at the town of Walker Community Center. The police youth coalition holiday party will be held on Tuesday, December seventeenth. At the town of Walker Community Center, the youth coalition will also be hosting a bowling party at Twins Pins on Friday, December. Twentieth from six PM to eight PM. Um, Councilman Coin touched on this, but I'll read it as well. Uh, as far as overnight parking, especially in war two. Um, commencing October first and continuing through April first, overnight parking is prohibited. On public road rates between the hours of midnight and six AM. Additionally, overnight parking is also prohibited. The remainder of the year when more than two inches of snow accumulates within the twenty-four hour period. Especially in, in our area where um, we have a lot of, a, a lot of cars being parked overnight. In, on the roads, it becomes a hazard for those plows to go around them and get the snow plowed off the road. So be conscious of that. And um, consider that when you're moving the cars around. Within the support of the, with the support of a grant from Orange County Stop DWA. Beginning next Wednesday, our police department in conjunction with our law enforcement partners will be conducting an enhanced DWI. DWI enforcement. School resource officers on December thirteenth and seventeenth. Between the hours of five and seven PM, our school resource officers will partner with the Maple Hill. And William A. Carter Elementary Schools respectively for cookies with cops. Um. As far as comments, uh, my condolences to the family of Lonnie Hand. Uh, Lonnie worked for the town and and I got to know him. He was here twenty-six years working with the town. He was also a neighbor. And so um, my sincere condolences and sympathy to the family. And congratulations to my friend Kevin Mulqueen. Good luck and much success. I, I know you'll do a great job. And just for everyone out there, I, I want to wish you a happy Thanksgiving. Uh, remember to give thanks to all that we have, our family, our friends and our good health. And um, I am thankful next week on Thanksgiving, uh, uh, it'll be my anniversary. I'll be married forty-one years. So. That's enough. Thank you.
Poor Julie.
Yeah.
Don't ask me how we did it, so. And that's all. Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Thank you. Councilman Vanilla?
Start off with wishing everybody a very happy Thanksgiving next week. Um, again, with the weather, winter's coming. If you see emergency vehicles. On the road going somewhere, please make way for them. We don't, we want to try and avoid accidents as much as possible. And by also uh, clearing up the roads, uh, be aware of the uh, plows and salting that'll be done. Uh, want to wish congratulations to Michael and Kevin. Looking forward to everything that you guys are gonna do. And that's it.
Thank you. Councilman Johnson?
Thanks supervisor. Uh, I'll start with the building department. Uh, for the month of October, two hundred and sixty-two permits. Uh, issued a hundred and eighteen certificates, total fees collected were eighty-eight thousand eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Addressed forty-six complaints and carried out one thousand one hundred and ten inspections. Water and sewer. Uh, there were three service leaks and two water main breaks that were repaired in the last month, also done with minimal interruptions. That's always a great job. By the crew and thanks for everybody's understanding. The fire hydrants that were identified as needing repairs or replacement during the fall fire hydrant flushing all have been addressed and repaired and are functioning. Uh, the employees are currently cleaning and doing maintenance on the valves in the system. Uh, this helps. The um, access for repair should there be an emergency. The fourth quarter uh, total tri-halo-methanes and haliocetic acid samples have been collected, the last one for the year. Um, just recently and again, you know, fingers crossed, we're hoping we're below the eighty parts per billion action lim- action limit. Um, if this round does come back fine, that would give us a whole year with um, good results below anything that was elevated before, since we did our repairs. Uh, which will take us off the EPA watch list. The department is actually monitoring the water levels in all wells. As you know, we haven't had much precipitation. If you drive by any of Middletown's reservoirs, they're down like eight or ten feet um, vertically. Uh, so clearly there's um, you know, a concern about water. If you've paid attention to any of our surrounding municipalities, most of them have issued some sort of restrictions, mandatory or warnings for water usage. Uh, good news is Walk Hill's not going to do that yet, nothing mandatory, but we do ask. Um, you know, if you can conserve water as much as possible. Because without significant rainfall. To recharge your groundwater, it's just a matter of time before that'll become an issue. Now, I know you said that, hey, we had some rain today, maybe an inch or inch or two. But understand that every storm, fifty percent of the water that falls goes right back into the evaporation system for the water cycle. Thirty percent runs off and only twenty soaks in. So if we get an inch of rain, we're looking at less than a quarter to recharge your wells. So we need lots more than that. The um, Rikowski Well Field on track and moving, Wase Water Treatment Project, the Clarifier Upgrade also doing well, should be completed by the end of December. The departments are addressing, switching out and monitoring and getting things together for the colder um, months to come along for the treatment. And as always, you know, they do that operation twenty-four hours a day, three sixty-five days a year. So great job by all those people uh, that make that happen. For comments, I'd just like to say congratulations to Mikey Nye. He's a great guy, um, works very hard for the town, well deserved. And his promotion as a working leader in the Parks Department. Um, so a great job for him. Kevin Mulqueen, I've known for, I don't know, thirty years. Um, he's a great guy and as you know, I was um, a member of the zoning board and the chairman for ten years uh, together. So this UBA is, you know, kind of a, a, a home thing for me. So great job and I know you'll do a good job there. Thank you. Looking forward to that. And um, the budget was passed, as you recall recently, and I think this board did a great job looking for every dollar that we could. To keep the town running in a way that, you know, it's not really gonna pinch your pockets or affect your wallet. With no real just um, decrease in services and actually an increase in a couple. So great job there. Um, even though we've had this rain today, there is still a burn ban effect in a lot of places. Um, you know, please don't throw your cigarettes out the window right now. Uh, the leaves are like kindling and everything. It's just a bad, bad scene. No open burning at your house and um. You got heard these guys mentioned snow and stuff like that, like really quick. The ground is way too warm for it to accumulate on road surfaces to any degree around here. You'd have to be in a much higher elevation where it's been colder longer in order for it to accumulate and stick. So um, no, there won't be any snow tonight. That's my recommendation. You can check Ben Knowles, but I bet you I win. Um, and finally, uh, happy Thanksgiving uh, to everyone out there. I, I just have to say, please take the time to enjoy your family and friends. Uh, you know, because that's what Thanksgiving is for. Um, you know, Christmas and holidays where there's presents and gifts and things. There's a whole nother level, but this is just good time with your friends, family, you know, enjoying good food and being thankful for what you have. So please take a time. Take the time to enjoy that the best that you can. Thank you.
Thank you. This is why I wanted to go first, so I can, they took all my thunder. Um, one of the things that um, I want to talk about is the Clean Street Program that we started back in June. Um, where we hired two individuals to go around. One of the complaints that we've always had is. Our roads being dirty. So we hired two individuals and they worked from June, like seventeen all the way to the end of uh, of September. And during that time, they up cleaned approximately thirty-six streets, roads in the town of Walk Hill. And then they came back uh, at the beginning of November. And then they came back uh at the beginning of November and they did another eleven rows to date. And what they did was we had them clean all the political signs uh five days after the election. That's always been a pet peeve with a lot of people. These signs are all around. What are we doing with them? Um I don't know if anyone noticed, but on by Saturday after the elections, there was no political signs in the town. I would say the majority, ninety-five percent of them were picked up and that was taken apart. So I, the town is looking better, looking good. Um I was going through some streets and just to see what the work that was done and it looks good. And we're gonna continue doing this into the new year. Um we're not gonna establish a standard station department, but these individuals um out there doing good good work for the residents of the town and trying to keep. If you do come across anyone, you know, please do not get into a confrontation. Have you seen them throwing something out of the window? Unfortunately, we do have, um it's about education, you know. Like Councilman Johnson said, with the ban on um, you know, the burning ban, throwing the cigarettes. It's annoying to see someone, you know, holding on to the garbage to get home and throw it into a garbage can, them throwing it out the window. Um and we know that's happening because how our bottles are getting on the road. They had a lot, they they were or the way it works, these individuals go clean these roads, leave the garbage back there. Parking department um employees go back, pick up the bags. And they've been a lot, a lot of garbage. So we're gonna start going into areas where we know there's illegal dumping going on in the town and see how we can try to use these these gentlemen to help us do that, clean that area up and try to um maybe to create some type of a surveillance system in those areas, because um no one should be doing illegal dumping. Um so seniors, um I had an opportunity to go down to this our community center, meet with the seniors. They went on their trips. They were down there. Um when you go down there, you can't stay long. You have to be, you have to, you have to let them know you're coming because they're playing bingo. And when they're playing their bingo, you cannot interrupt them. Five minutes, ten minutes at the most, and then you stop and you gotta get out of there. You can't get in the way of their bingo. So I went down there. They knew I was coming, had a nice conversation with them and it's definitely, definitely a a good program. If if anyone knows any um grandparents who want to join Thursdays, I think they start at eleven o'clock down at the community center. Next week, next Saturday on November thirtieth, we have a holiday parade. Uh lighting tree, I don't know if anyone saw, we did get our tree this week. Um thanks to Dogwood Acres who donated the tree, cut it down and delivered it to uh the Galleria Mall in the Macy's parking lot. The tree is up. They're gonna probably decorate it on Saturday and the following Saturday on on the thirtieth, um starting at five, we're gonna start the parade. Um lineup starts at around four and we're gonna go up Walker Winning Way. We anticipate a lot of people being in the parade this year and it's gonna be nice. We're planning a drone show the way we did for uh Fourth of July, weather permitting, of course. We will have a nice um five to ten-minute drone show that night. So I hope to see everyone out there. Hope Mother Nature is nice to us. And of course, on December, on December twenty-sixth, at the Galleria Mall, we will have our Kwanzaa celebration. And then we'll have our menorah lighting on Sunday, December twenty-ninth at six thirty. My comments. Mike, congrats. Um like I said earlier, well deserved. Um I'm looking forward to working with you. Been fantastic the two weeks you've been there as working leader. So very well deserved. Thank, thank you for all you do for the town. Um Kevin, welcome back. That's all I got to say. Welcome back. You're part of the town again. Um just, I want to say happy Thanksgiving to everyone. And this will be my first year without my mother and everyone needs to be thankful for what we have. We live in this great, great country. It's great town and everything we've done in this town over the last three years has been nothing but great, moving the town in the right direction. Um so everyone should be thankful for what we have. Um we, I want everyone to know, next Friday, the day after Thanksgiving, Town Hall will be closed. And it's a holiday to the employees and it will be closed. With that being said, happy Thanksgiving. Please be safe out there and enjoy. Tom Clerk.
Thank you. Um usually this is the time of year where I put the strong arm on people for um the Boys and Girls Club and I'm happy to say that um we're almost ready to say that we fulfilled all the wishes. Um I think we have one more left and the supervisor has said he would take that. So I just want to thank um most of our, many of our employees helped out with that. And then there's some people from the outside um who always help with that and and I'm very grateful. Um I see Sal is here tonight and last Friday, um I had an opportunity to go to the Salvation Army's um Red Kettle Kickoff Breakfast and Sal and Peggy um were both honored for the work that they do. Um not only for the Salvation Army, but for the community at large. Um Sal is very involved. I think he's on our board of the um Police Community Council. Um and it's sometimes it's troubling to me. We do have a little red kettle on our counter this year. Um a lot of folks say, you know, well, they they don't help everybody. They do this, they don't do that. Let me tell you, they help everybody. Um after the breakfast, which was held at the Oak and Reed in downtown Middletown. And when you, when I left there, um this group of Salvation Army folks are located on West Main Street in Middletown. They don't sell anything that you give them. If you bring clothing there, if you bring food there, nothing is sold. The store is a whole different entity. Um they give away things. And after we ate a forty-dollar breakfast, I went by the Salvation Army because some of the officers um had to leave because it was Food Distribution Day. And it made me sick to my stomach that at nine thirty on a Friday morning, there were more than fifty people in line with their bags waiting to go in and get food. And it just eh just like breaks your heart. So if you're looking for someplace to either give some hours of of time, they're always looking for volunteers. Um when you see those bell ringers, it's not, it's not a scam. It is, it is real. And there are real people who need real help. I I'm telling you, you just put the money in the bucket. Don't buy Little Johnny, you know, doesn't need twenty-seven toys that he's not gonna play with because the stuff's all gonna be piled up in the corner. Take some money out of your pocket and give it to the Salvation Army. They're good people. They're hardworking people. The people they are helping are people that go to work every day. Some of those people go to work every day and have no place to live. They go to work, they live in their car. They go to work, they live behind the St. Joseph Cemetery. We have to do something as a nation for some of these people. And like I said, if you can go ring the bell, they're they're having to pay people to ring the bell this year because they don't have enough people. Call them. Call Sal. He'll tell you how to get in touch. I know Lou has done it for many years. You stand out in the cold for a couple hours. Folks like us that know everybody, we could raise a ton of money if we stood in front of one of those kettles. Go to ShopRite, go to Sam's Club on a Saturday, ring the bell, they'll walk up and they'll say, oh my God, George, it's so good to see you. I'm telling you. I know I talk too much, but this Salvation Army is just a passion for me. When you see people waiting and eh eh it was just, it was heart-wrenching. And they also have an Amazon wishlist that you can go on Amazon and you can type in Salvation Army and you can buy toys. You don't have to do anything. You can just buy toys. You can pay for them. They'll be shipped to the Salvation Army. They wrap them, they give them to people and please, if you can, help them, help them. And Sal, congratulations to you and Peggy. Um you do hard work. You certainly do. Mike, congratulations. Um you're a good guy and you are a hard worker. And Kevin, we've been around the block, pal. You were on the town board. Um we're Met fans. So on the Mondays that the Z B A is, it's it's a good game. I would imagine um the new member would probably give me his seat um at Citi Field and I'll go instead of you, Kevin. So don't worry, I'll cover you.
I think after that that speech and game, I may have to have you at a church to give a sermon.
Alrighty. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Well said, Louisa.
Madam Clerk, I might just have to take you up on that. I always wanted to do that. I know how to do it. We'll talk.
Rain on the uh seventh at Sam's Club. I'll take all the help I can get.
We'll talk. Okay. Uh Commissioner's not in today, but we have a great police chief. Your mic is not working?
I believe I broke it. Um we're experiencing technical difficulties. I apologize. I hit it when I was sitting down earlier and it hasn't been the same since. Just a few follow-up comments to both Councilman Valentine and Councilman Coyne. Um Eric talked about the Police Youth Coalition meeting this past week. We, the Youth Coalition held a dinner for the vets, was well attended by the board members, members of the public, the Rotary, Sal and his team did all the cooking, great group. Um over a hundred and twenty people we had attend the spaghetti dinner. It was a wonderful turnout and supported the vets in our community. So congratulations to Rosie and the whole team. And thank you Rotary for that. Mark touched on the overnight parking. So historically, we've been fairly lenient with that here in the town. Um and consequently, what we're finding is more and more vehicles are parking overnight on roadways. Vehicles remaining on roadways overnight is one thing when there's no snow, but when there's snow and you get plowed in and the temperature stays below freezing and the vehicles remain there for several days, it poses a hazard in our community. Fire trucks, ambulances can't get past sometimes. Uh so as time goes on, we're getting more and more complaints. Our community is growing. And most recently, we had complaints and we went out there and wrote summonses. It, you can't park on the street. And if someone complains, we're going to respond, oh, between October first, I'm sorry, between the ti- time set forth in the law. Um so October first, April first, sorry. So as we get complaints, we're gonna respond and issue summonses. You know, i- in the interest of uh notice to the citizens, last year the supervisor drafted a memo and we warn people in cases where the parking is so severe and blocking the snowplows, we're gonna tow the vehicles. It it's really, if it's that bad, we're gonna respond that harshly because we can't tolerate this, especially once again in the more densely populated areas of our town. With respect to the D W I grant, um this is extra funds that came in. It's for the holiday season. So in the interest of deterring people from overindulging in alcohol during the holiday season, letting everyone know, we're gonna be doing checkpoints in cooperation or conjunction with our partners at City of Middletown, State Police and the County Sheriff's Office. I I'll give you all but the locations, Wednesday night, right, you know, next Friday night, these are nights we're gonna be out there and there's zero tolerance. The on the consult, overconsumption of alcohol and other substances and and subsequent driving of motor vehicles poses such a significant hazard on our roadway um that we have to take very aggressive action. So everyone's been forewarned. Um please hopefully take the words of uh the warning and that'll stop you from drinking and driving. We're currently investigating a shooting that happened on October thirty-first at seventy-six Sandberg Court. There was one individual who was shot and unarmed. The investigation is still ongoing with respect to that. And lastly, we had two recent incidents of cyber threats at Mon Hagen Middle School. Our technology, our technological capabilities in conjunction with the FBI, the State Police and other entities we work with on a regular basis. We are so swiftly able to identify anyone that wants to pose a threat of a shooter to any of our schools that in both cases, the the person who made the threat was identified and apprehended in a very brief period of time. So once again, in the interest of uh warning our our citizens and our youth in our schools, it's not gonna be tolerated. The school district won't tolerate it. We won't tolerate it. The county attorney's office won't tolerate it. They'll prosecute these cases to the fullest extent. And many years ago, we had eh we had a series of incidents. Ironically enough, Amy Crean, the superintendent, was the principal of Naples Elementary School. And the incidents were so severe that the federal government prosecuted the student. It was a juvenile and they prosecuted him under a terrorism act. We can't have threats made against our schools. Um we do have the capabilities to track down and charge people rather effectively now because technology has advanced and allowed us to do so. So with that being said, I hope that warning deters anybody from any future acts in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Next, we got public participation, three minutes. Any too close to it. That's not me. I was saying. I was about to start singing. You don't want that.
Yeah, let me uh let me come and thank all of you for for voting for me to be on the zoning board. Thank everyone who made some kind comment. But I thought it would be appropriate at this time for me to just repeat something that many of you heard last night. I was at the Zoning Board of Appeals Monday night observing all the current members serving on that board. And every one of them considered every matter that appeared before the zoning board very carefully and articulated very well the rationale for whatever vote they took. And so Eric, the zoning board is continuing to do good work and I'm very happy to to serve on that board and thank you very much.
Thank you, Kevin. Anyone on Zoom? Anyone in the audience?
Uh yes, on Zoom. Okay. Uh yeah, um last month you presented the budget and I think it was last week you voted on the budget. Um I did get a copy of it and there's a copy online, but is there capability of getting a copy as a spreadsheet?
Well, I'm not sure what you mean by a spreadsheet.
I was thinking download it and like into Excel instead of uh the the version out there is just a PDF where it's a printable version.
That's that's what we provide, a PDF version.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else? Motion to adjourn. Thank you everyone for coming tonight. All in favor? Thank you.